Okay, this is a video of the the city, Mount Vernon City Council Legislative Session from September 25th, 2024. I'm going to focus on the public comment section of the meeting, the speakers, and then the city council response. This, there were, I think, four speakers. It was all about quality of life issues. So let's go over and listen to some of the speakers.
Good evening. My name is Kim Barhow. I'm the owner of Valentino's Restaurant Day on Gramerton Avenue. I've been having issues with a smoke shop next door from me, 550 Gramerton Avenue. They're selling marijuana illegally. They're across from a childcare center. They're also smoking marijuana outside, which affects my restaurant. People, and as people are walking in and out, as well as children coming in and smelling it. Also, the biggest issue is the cigar smoke inside. They do not have a good ventilation system, and it's coming into the restaurant. This past week, I had six tables leave because of the smell. I am asking kindly to please do something about this issue. I cannot run a business this way. And also, just hearsay, I've heard that they have guns in the establishment for protection.
My name is Kenneth Miller. I live at 44 St. Paul's Place. I'm here representing the Kingsbridge Gardens Block Association this evening. The issue we're having is with one of our neighbors who live at 64 St. Paul's Place. Over the last year, year and a half, he's running an illegal social club nightclub after hours by every Saturday from hours of about 12:30, 1 o'clock a.m. to Sunday morning, 8, 9 o'clock in the morning. With that being said, we're having individuals coming up and down the block, making noise as they're driving. They got their car radios on as loud. The car radios are loud. They're even talking in in front of people's driveways. This has been going on for like the last year and a half, and it's getting progressively worse. We have people who've been living on this block for 30, 40 years, who are becoming intimidated by the outsiders coming in. They're urinating, leaving debris as they're leaving his establishment. He's running this out of his garage. He doesn't even have a garage door. He has two double doors with a padlock on it that are soundproof now. You know, because we reported to the police. I've been filed complaint with the buildings department, but they said they can't do anything because he's operating outside of their business hours, so they can't send us inspector over to investigate this, which I find very strange. The compound of problem, when we do call Mount Vernon Police, sometimes they show, sometimes they don't show. I just called them last Saturday night. Officer got out his car. I called about an illegally parked car, got out his car, flashed a flashlight on the registration, went around the car. I guess he was checking the license plate, flashed his light to the house, seeing it was in front of a driveway, and got back in his car and drove off. This is like the third time that happened to me. So we're not getting the cooperation that we need from Mount Vernon Police, but it's a nuisance. We have all our neighbors here who face the same thing. These guys are walking up and down the block loud, urinating, dropping plastic cups, congregating outside of 64 St. Paul's Place. It's like they've settled in. And they're parking in front of people's driveways like, who you? You know, like, Ms. Cross came out to a church one morning. Guy was actually pulled in her driveway. She said something, can you move the car? There's a bunch of people out there. They have a lot of foul language to say to her.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Barnes. I reside at 73 Rockledge Avenue, the city of Mount Vernon, New York. Appreciate city council for hearing me tonight. I want to talk about business 900 at 900 South Columbus Avenue, National Supplies Port, and it also has the adjacent lot, the corner lot at 600 Block, Third Avenue, which also is part of Kingsbridge Gardens. So there's multiple issues with this business, right? Trucks are being double parked. These are 18-wheel trucks are being double parked on Third Avenue side, right next to the residential homes on on Third Avenue. Trucks are idling 5:30 in the morning, right? Noise, the fumes are going in front of people's homes. I believe the ordinance says that if they're loading trucks, it has to be, can't start till 7:00 a.m., but I'm not sure. But garbage left by the business and the truckers that park there. Our block association about three weeks ago, we did, we're doing our community cleanup. And from FedEx, which is on the corner of Rockledge and Third, all the way down to Columbus, where the business is located, we picked up two five-gallon bags of garbage and trash left by receptacles, bottles, or whatever left by the businesses and the truckers. Trucks that are 18-wheelers are using the pedestrians' driveways to back up to go into the business, right? I mean, actually backing up into the business, people's driveways to make the turn to get into the business. And like I said, the fumes, the garbage, the running of the trucks all hours of the night. And now our concern is, we believe they brought the Salvation Army building as well. So now is that going to be more trucks, more bit, more noise, more garbage, right? We understand that business is important for the city. It helps our tax base. We understand that. But businesses have these rules, regulations, and ordinances that every business has to obey.
I am Lynn Smith. I live at 78 Parkway East, and I wanted to ask about the animal shelter. I am interested because I'm a former volunteer. I'm a director of the Friends Group that helped the shelter with financial costs for many years, and I'm a rescuer who gets street cats neutered and, if possible, adopted. And I remember that about 16 months ago, right before the election, the mayor called a press conference and announced that the city was going to get a million dollars from New York State to fix up the building and reopen the shelter. And I was very happy to hear that news. The Friends Group was also happy. The president of Friends is a professional architect, and she has experience working with shelters. And she actually called the mayor's office to offer her consulting services pro bono and to help lay out a plan for a new shelter. However, I read that the grant requires that the work be done in two years, and it's 16 months later. And when I drive by the shelter, what's the same as it always is. So two meetings that the city set up with our president, who offered her services, were canceled. I can only assume that the city has changed its mind. So if that's the case, I just wanted to ask, are you going to tell anybody? You know, if you've made a decision not to reopen the animal shelter, then I think the public should know. I have to say that personally, I think it's a shame. I think that we need more resources, not less, to first stray and abandon animals. You know, the Humane Society does its best, but it's still not enough. They have very limited space, and they just can't accept all the animals that the shelter, you know, would have taken in. You know, they often say no. I would have thought that a million dollars and pro bono architectural services would have gone a long way toward, you know, building what could have been a great resource to help local animals. So I hope that you'll share your decision and just explain your reason. Thank you.
Okay, let's quickly review. The first speaker was the owner of Valentino's Restaurant on Gramerton Avenue, and she reported that she's losing business because of cannabis and cigar smoke coming from the smoke shop next door. She pointed out that there is, people smoke pot on the street in front of the restaurant, or I guess on the sidewalk in front of the restaurant. And there's a childcare facility across the street. She also alleged possible guns on sight, and this is hurting her business. Next, we had two speakers from the Kingsbury Bridge section of the city in the southeastern corner of the city. One was reported of some sort of illegal club happening out of someone's garage, it sounds like. And the resident who lives on the street reported partying all night, Saturday night into Sunday morning, like all night long, he reports. There are noise, trash, cars parking in driveway, people urinating, and rudeness that, you know, he pointed out, one of his neighbors going out to leave for church in the morning and finding a car parked in her driveway. She asked the person to move the car, and it was reported that she was cursed at. So rudeness, this could easily escalate into something more. The second Kingsbury resident, the first speaker was from the Kingsbury Neighborhood Association, and there were many members of that community, that neighborhood out that ended the meeting. The second speaker spoke about 18-wheelers in the neighborhood, double parked, idling, releasing fumes, noise. The truck owners are littering, and also concern about expansion if they take over a new spot, a building from the Salvation Army. So that was the second and third speakers. And the third issue that was raised was about the animal shelter. Lynn Smith, who is the member of the Friends of Mount Vernon Shelter Animals, was up asking, is the shelter going to be opened the way it was promised when there was a press conference held before the last Democratic primary in June 2023, with the mayor Gary Pretlow and a couple of council members reporting that they got this money, thanked Gary Pretlow, and talked about the wonderful things they were going to do to restore the animal shelter. I made a couple of videos about that earlier that year, I think in late December of 2022 and early January 2023, when the, they sort of abruptly, when the public was abruptly informed that the shelter had closed. You can go see those videos. They're on the YouTube channel where this video is appearing. Anyway, Ms. Smith was just following up. Will the shelter be fixed? If not, when are you going to tell us what's happening? And then what happened with the money? So those, those were the three issues. Let's go back now and listen to the city council responses to those issues. Okay, we're not going to listen to all of the city council comments, just the ones that I think were pertinent. So let's listen to what they have to say. It starts with council member Boxell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. The smoke shop, 550 grams, and yeah, sure, that's terrible, terrible, really. We all enjoy dining in church. We're being a partner, and we're in for very, very. Yeah, if there's any illegal activities, you should show. We have to all, that's the point. Mr. Miller, similar situation, please. I know you've been here before, and you seem that you're kind of like between a rock and a hard place to get stuck with this, so. I think that we also have to do some follow-up on our own with that. And Mr. Bunch, I know we're going to have some ordinance officers going to be coming online soon. Possibly, we can address this issue with enforcing the regulations already on the books regarding how business can operate, their trucks, and at what times, and garbage pickup and such. So I think that we have the law on our side in that aspect, but as far as enforcement, we definitely can do a better job and do a better. So the animal shelter, as far as the animal shelter, I think I'm going to defer to the executive. Once we get something written, as far as their future plans, their official plans with them, I know that they said that it's going to be closed going forward, right? The animal shelter is going to be closed going forward. We're not going to reopen it unofficially. I haven't seen that officially in our response. So but that's what the rules are up here, so.
So OCM has this in a pickle, because when they legalize cannabis, they made OCM the only enforcement for it, right? And of course, they are understaffed, they take forever to get to the city, or they never come to the city to shut down a business. So we really don't have any authority. You know, I'm gonna say allegedly, but if this shop is selling cannabis, there are numerous bodegas that we know are selling. So we're trying to figure out a way to clamp down on this issue. So I'm hoping that we can come up with something within the next month or so. And with regard to the guns, internet, can we follow up with PD? I guess I have someone go in and check, ensure that you have those legally, if they're there allegedly, right? Mr. Miller, yeah, 12:30 to 9:00 a.m. is crazy. And I've seen this happen, that people kind of turn their places into clubs. So there's a few things that we can do. I think what's important, as you said, is that we don't have an active buildings department here 24/7, and other municipalities do. And because we don't have an active buildings department 24/7, people can take advantage of the hours that buildings department is in. You know, the enforcement agents or the people can expect aren't working. I think what the city should do is move to make sure that we have personnel 24/7, right? Just like other municipalities, we should have a hotline that constituents can call in after hours, and they can, in order, there can be investigations done after hours. Another thing is, I know the commissioner, the deputy commissioners, they don't have set hours. So perhaps they are the ones who are going out on these calls. I think also the fact that a police officer will come out to the car, get out of his car, put a flashlight on a illegally parked car, and then return to business per usual is insane, right? I think that shouldn't happen, especially if you've taken the time to respond to a complaint. So what I would ask from you is, when you make these calls, if you, if there's a response that you believe should not happen, contact us, right? So that we can follow up with PD and see who actually went out on the call. Make sure that person gets the proper training. And if it's a continuous thing, you have it. I love it. Can we share it with the internet as well, so that we can get on it and speak to PD? Because if we don't say something to them, it'll continue to happen. And we've had people come in and complain about similar things, right? So I want to make sure that we address it, and the only way to address it is to identify exactly who's doing it. So I think that'll be helpful. And then we can also see if we can get a directed patrol at that house as well. Mr. Bunch, with the business. So I'll be honest, I'm not exactly sure what ordinances we have on the books about the idling at those hours, but I'll check to see. But I think one thing that we can do is we can reach out to PDW, and this is something that they can be enforcing as well. And I think a lot of our issues comes down to enforcement, right? And making sure we get the personnel out to the right places. So if there's littering, if there's noise, the business owners are required to keep their property clean, so we need to start writing violations to kind of motivate people to keep their property clean, right? So I think if we can also ask the commissioner to have the folks out doing some big deal violations, that'd be helpful in that area. Ms. Smith, sorry, with the animal shelter. As far as I know, I haven't received an update. So like you, I thought that the work on the animal shelter was going to be done. Is it possible that we can get a letter from council president from the whole council asking for an official update? Absolutely. I'm concerned, like you are, Ms. Smith, that we may lose funding. The city is definitely not in a position to lose any funding. So if we only have two years, we would need to get on it as soon as possible.
Mr. Miller and Mr. Bunch, thank you for coming. Thank you for being Kingsbury Channel. Briefly, we do not do a great job here of quality of life issues. But I'll be meeting with the PD Commissioner and the Building Commissioner General, just saying, what's our plan? When quality of life issues come up, what's our strategy to help get that?
Let's now go back to follow up. The first issue was the Valentino's Restaurant on Gramerton Avenue with a concern about cannabis and cigar smoke interfering with her ability to do business. City council response, response, everyone was, you know, we'll look into it, concerned, obviously. Danielle Brown pointed out that the law around cannabis in New York State, it's the Office, OCM, the Office of Cannabis Management, that it kind of binds the hands of the city. They're, according to Councilmember Brown, they're kind of limited in what they can do. I guess the thing that I'll point out about that is that, you know, Mount Vernon chose to allow the cannabis industry into our small city. Obviously, illegal cannabis is separate, but I think the presence of cannabis in general, there's a couple of shops that have opened up. And again, this is not, this is not about, you know, whether people should smoke, adults should have the individual right to smoke pot if they want. People are allowed to drink, and they should be allowed to smoke pot. That's fine. It's whether this industry makes sense for our small city in the greater context of the various challenges that we have already in attracting, retaining, and growing other types of businesses, such as, you know, a thriving restaurant industry. Mount Vernon chose to do it. Now, Ms. Brown pointed out, you know, even with changes at the state level with law, it still makes it hard for us to enforce on a local level. So I don't know, maybe if we had thought this through more clearly, we would have made a different decision. Said, you know, we want to opt out of allowing cannabis in our city, the way other communities did. Keep in mind that if, as other communities opt out, the ones that opt in, it's going to force more cannabis density into those areas. That's, that's my sense. We'll know with time, but I don't think we're off to a good start. So that's the first point I'll make about that. The second point, this, this just kind of bothers me. We have a land use board called the, it's the ARB, the Architectural Review Board. I refer to it as the Arbitrary Review Board. So let's just think about this. The city tries to dictate color type, style of materials used on private property. When homeowners want to renovate, put a roof on, put new windows in, renovate a garage, something like that, but the city can't control smoking pot on public sidewalks in front of a restaurant or near a childcare facility. That just strikes me as a very odd regulatory scheme that I think really needs some careful attention on what we're doing, certainly at the local county and the state level. This seems bizarre to me, that you're, you're allowed to dictate minutia by some individuals who, these are individuals on this Architecture Review Board, who are living some personal, subjective aesthetic fantasy out by being on this board, directing private, private homeowners, how to, how to use their money to deal with their own property. But somehow, the city cannot, cannot protect a restaurant owner or a childcare facility from people smoking pot on the sidewalk outside. That's something I think we should all be concerned about going forward. The second issue, this was the Kingsbury Section of the city, the two speakers who came up. The first was the illegal, potential illegal club in someone's house, partying all night, noise, trash, urine, rudeness, et cetera. The second was the 18-wheelers, double parked, idling, fumes, so on and so forth. So the city council response, again, in general, I think, I think Danielle Brown's responses were the most thoughtful and detailed. Now, she had the advantage, I think, of going earlier in the sequence. Maybe other council members would have said more, but she covered it. So Boxell went first, she went second. So she notes regarding the illegal club that the building department is not staffed at night, which is kind of odd. Not that it's not staffed at night, but that would be a reason why we cannot control what seems to be a wide variety of violations there. Anyway, she suggests fixing that by perhaps having commissioners who are not locked into a regular nine-to-five schedule be able to go out. I suppose they would go out with, accompanied by the police. You're not going to have a, you know, a building commissioner go out to a party presumably at 1:00 a.m. you know, on a Sunday morning where people are partying and trying to give them a ticket. That seems like you'd be just importing disaster. But she also suggested a hotline. She was concerned about the police behavior that the, that I think it was Mr. Miller noted, who, when he saw, the police officer saw the violation, shined his flashlight, and then left. Dejel Brown said, that's insane. She wants follow-up on that. She also recommended these, a directed patrol. That's a good idea. So we'll have to see over time. If, if this, if this gentleman returns again, then that's not good. It would mean that, that, you know, nothing really changed. Regarding the idling trucks issue, Councilmember Brown said she'll look into the idling rule. She wasn't sure about those. And need to enforce ordinances. So Petit and Boxell, they generally just noted that the city doesn't do a good job with quality of life issues. This, this seems obvious, I think, to most of us who have been half awake in the city for the last few years. And so, yeah, ordinance and law enforcement is lacking. Yes, agreed. I guess a couple of things I want to point out here, and I'm going to jump from this for a second to a couple of other documents. Actually, a couple of websites I'm going to show quickly. New York idling law. It seems to me like we don't need any local ordinances for our police department to enforce that. And then the other thing I want to point out, that night in the meeting, I was at the Dole Center for a meeting with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, which was reporting on Phase One results of a study. Some people may be aware that was going on for the last couple of years in Mount Vernon, New Rochelle, Yonkers, locations in New York City, some up, up, upstate cities, Buffalo, Rochester, to check air quality. And so they were there to report the results. I was there because I'm, I'm on the Board of Trustees of the Mount Vernon Public Schools. And so I'm concerned about the air that children are breathing in schools around the city and the, the health impact that has on them, both, for example, asthma, and then the impact that that has on learning in general. So that's why I was there. But I'm going to switch over, and we're going to take a look now at their website and some of the results. We can focus in and take a look at the neighborhood, the Kingsbury neighborhood, where the gentleman was talking about idling fumes, diesel fumes, and we can see now the, some of the empirical data that they have. So let's jump over. Okay, first, this is just the website for New York State. It's also a Department of Environmental Conservation website pointing out the New York State idling law. It's right here. So Ms. Brown should take comfort and know that there is a state law that is enforceable that precludes idling from large vehicles over 8,500 pounds, which 18-wheelers certainly are, from idling for more than five minutes at a time. So we should just start out by enforcing that. Look at the fines. Fines for violating this law range from $500 to $18,000 in the case of the first violation. So we ought to enforce this law, and the violator should be held accountable for that. Let's jump over now also to, this is this storybook, or this story map, I should say, from the Department of Environmental Conservation. So what we can do, you can go look at this. It's an incredible tool. Here, I'm looking at the section of the city. Right, yeah, there's, there's Brush Park, there's St. Paul's. So this is the section of the city. There's Rockledge, there's Third. This is, there's St. Paul. This is right where the gentleman from this Kingsbury section, this southeastern section of the city, we're concerned about the pollution. So over here, what you can do, there's all sorts of filters you can add. Let's just take a look at their, the diesel fuel and see what happens. The darker the shade of the, of these, what are those, hexagon? No, yeah, I think they're hexagons. One, two, three. I think they're hexagons. Yeah, hexagons. The darker the shade, the more this study has picked up these, these environmental toxins. So diesel fuel, it's not surprising to see higher numbers there. If you, if you moved the other side of the city. If you if you moved to the other side of the city, you can see it goes it goes way down, but in that corner of the city. It's it's higher. You can toggle and check out whatever you want here. You can take that out and say, let's see nitrous dioxide. You can see a couple of sections where that is. Anyway, so just to bolster their claims. About concern about higher elevated levels of of diesel in the air. And the the polluting effects that has and their concern about. Vendors violating the idling law and and possibly expanding their turf in this area and the impact that will have on them and their children. The schools that we have in that area, childcare facilities. Is 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 legitimate and it's real and it needs to be addressed. So anyway, let's jump back over to the presentation. The third issue that came up was about the animal shelter. Is it going to reopen? Isn't going to reopen? What happened with the million dollars that was announced at the press conference? The city council response, Boxell said that he heard a rumor the animal shelter will not be reopening. Danielle Brown requested, she thought, she seemed to think that the shelter was going to be fixed based on the press conference. She was at the press conference, as we'll see. She requested that a letter be sent from the city council to the mayor officially requesting an update about the animal shelter. And she expects concern about losing the million dollars in funding. But I think as we're going to see, it it was misleading the way the this was described at that press conference to say that there was a million dollars that. Somehow Gary Pretlow got for us in funding a new animal shelter. But let's go to the the June twenty twenty three press conference and listen to, you know, about two and a half minutes of it, and then we'll come back and pick up. Okay, so here we are, June second, twenty twenty three, just shortly before the Democratic primary. Let's listen to some comments. Just remember that, because they're they're treating Pretlow as if he's some sort of hero, that he secured money and that a million dollars is in the budget. He just pointed out that the money has always been there. There's there is a a provision for this in the budget, which we'll see in once we leave the video, but let's pick it back up.
Thank you. Can we get another round of applause? So on behalf of the council and especially on behalf of Councilwoman Caitlin Gleason, who is our, the chair of the Public Safety and Coles Committee and also. Our furry friend ambassador, right? She spent a lot of time here at the facility. So I want to thank Assemblyman Gary Pretlow for believing in Mount Vernon, for hearing the calls of our residents, for hearing the calls of the administration. Who are working with the administration to get money to invest in our animal shelters so that we can make sure that our animals are protected in our priority in Mount Vernon. Like the mayor said, I'm looking forward to what the animal shelter become, right? Looking forward to having a world-class animal shelter and making sure that we don't ever lose sight of our animals again. So thank you to the mayor and to the assemblymen for making sure that we have a vision on how we're going to take care of our furry friends moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, so that was the press conference. Very excited. Everyone was very excited. I was skeptical, others were skeptical that it was just a political stunt. Coming off a couple of weeks before a a primary. So. This is, this is what I I know, and I I looked it up right right away back then, but let's just, let's just be clear about this now. So there is a provision in New York State. It's called the New York State Companion Animal Capital Projects Fund. There is the link to the website. And this is what it says there. The Department invites eligible municipal incorporated nonprofit shelters, humane societies. To apply for these funds. Grand funds are available. For the cost of capital projects, including construction, renovation, rehabilitation, installation, so on and so forth, for the adequate care of sheltered dogs and cats. It looks like that the amount is capped at about five hundred thousand dollars. So I think like when when Gary Pretlow did the drumroll and said a million dollars. My my guess is that what he did was he he spoke to the people at the Department of Agriculture about, hey, Mount Vernon, can, is it right if Mount Vernon applies for more? The needs are great. But again, you have to, you have to be able to, you have to apply to get this. You have to complete a a request for proposals. And therein lies the rub. So it's not just gifted to you. You got to put, you got to put some thought and effort into it. I wanted to say a little bit about this fund. So here's a list of some Westchester County shelters, animal shelters that have tapped into this this capital funds project. So at least as early as two thousand eighteen, here is half a million dollars that went to the SPCA in Briar Cliff Manor for constructing a new animal shelter. In twenty nineteen, the Humane Society of Westchester, New Rochelle, where we now send our animals because our shelter closed, they got a half a million dollars. In twenty twenty two, the Humane Society of Westchester got another hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So they've gotten a total of, you know, six hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. This is just in Westchester County. Projects like this were going on at least as far back as twenty eighteen at shelters. All over New York State to the tune of millions of dollars a year. So this capital funds project for animal shelters has been there at the state. So in the end, what do I think of that June twenty twenty two press conference with the mayor and Pretlow? Danielle Brown got up there. At the time, I was skeptical. It seemed just like a straight up political stunt. And yeah, today, I I think it's, it was just a political stunt. Nothing was done. My guess is that they never applied. I'll be curious to see how this administration tries to spin what they did not do. In response to the request for information from the city council that gets to them. So. Stop sharing. So that's it. The cannabis issue is really, really troubling. The issue for our neighbors in the Kingsbridge area is very, very troubling. And this, this. Animal shelter issue is very, very troubling, you know. Personally, I I think the the only good news is that we live in an age where if you if you want. And I want. You can really educate yourself about what's going on in the city. You can find out, you can hear what politicians are saying and then go and do do research and see if the facts back that up. And, you know, we have this record, this permanent record now that we can that we can look back on. That June twenty twenty two past, June twenty twenty three animal shelter press conference. You know. It's anybody who who was supportive of that at the time, they ought to now be feel pretty duped by that. Because it was, it was just, it was just. You know, it was a political stunt. So anyway, enjoy the day.